Thank you for having us.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Counce, I missed you. I was looking and I just couldn't see. I'm getting old. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, that was... Totally inappropriate. No, I didn't. I tried not to. Okay, we will, we are still in recess from our regular board meeting. We are going to go ahead and open our public hearing on the final budget for 2000, I mean for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. And I'm calling the meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the final millage rate and the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Millage rates, millage rates are 4.6250 for operating purposes and 1.5000 for capital outlay purposes, or a total of 6.1250 mils. The final budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020 totals $255,373,843.54. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as to the millage levy or the budget proposal for the 2019-2020 fiscal year? Anyone wishing to come forward? Last call? There being no one? Is there a motion to include the supplemental, I'm sorry, is there a motion to include the supplemental millage rate of .7480 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mils in the resolution determined revenues and millage levies as required by law?
I mean to include the supplemental millage rate of .7480 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.5000 mils in the resolution determining revenues and millages levied according to law.
A second motion?
Linda Powers moved and Ginger Bryan seconded the motion to include the supplemental millage rate of .7480 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.5000 mils in the resolution determined revenues and millage levy as required by law. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Bradshaw?
Resolution of the District School Board of Citrus County, Florida, determining the amount of revenues to be produced and the millage to be levied for the general fund for the district local capital improvements fund and for the, and for district debt services, service fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020, whereas Section 101, 1.04 Florida statute requires that upon receipt of the certificate of the property appraiser giving the assessed valuation of the county and of each of the special tax school districts, the school board shall determine by resolution the amounts necessary to be raised for current operating purposes and for debt service funds and the millage to be levied for each such fund, including the voted millage, and whereas Section 101, 1.71 Florida statutes provides for the amounts necessary to be raised for local capital improvements, outlay, and the millage to be levied, and whereas the certificate of the property appraiser has been received, therefore be it resolved by the District School Board that the amounts necessary to be raised as shown by the officially adopted budget and the millages necessary to be levied for each school fund for the district for the fiscal year are as follows: District School Tax Nonvoted Levy, Certified taxable value $11,729,54874. Required description of levy, required local effort, amount to be raised $41,212,653. Millage levy 3.80, excuse me, 3.8770 mils. Total required millage $41,212,653. Millage levy 3.8770 mils. District School Tax Discretionary Millage Nonvoted Levy, Certified taxable value $11,729,54874. Description of levy discretionary operating, amount to be raised $7,951,268. Millage levy 0.7480 mils. District School Tax Additional Millage Voted Levy, Certified taxable value $11,729,54874. Description of levy additional operating, amount to be raised zero, millage levy zero. District Capital Improvement Tax Nonvoted Levy, Certified taxable value $11,729,54874. Description of levy local capital improvement, amount to be raised $15,945,056. Millage levy 1.5000 mils. District Debt Service Tax Voted Levy, Certified taxable value $11,729,54874. Millage levy 0.000. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate computed pursuant to Section 200.0651, closed print Florida statute by 3.39%.
Having heard the resolution, and there is a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2000, should that be 2019-2020 fiscal year?
I move to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Doug Dodd moved and Sandy Counce seconded the motion to adopt the final budget as the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the final budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
A resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 101,1 Florida statutes approve final millage rates, final five-year work plan?
This is Sandra Duncan.
Okay, and a final budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, excuse me, June 30, 2020, and whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, and whereas at a public meeting in a full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the final millage rates, final five-year work plan, the final budget in the amount of $255,373,843.54 for fiscal year 2019-2020, now therefore be it resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County, including the millage rates, as set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as the final budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the final budget?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Ginger seconded.
Sandy Counce moved and Ginger Bryan seconded the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion adopting, to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will adjourn the meeting. I want to thank everyone that, I know that's a very formal scripted process we have to go through annually, but it's important so that we can have the operations of the school district. With that, I'm going to reopen the regular board meeting, and I believe we had citizens' comments, and we need to then approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry, can you approve the minutes? Thank you. I just need a second. I have a motion by Ms. Counce, seconded by Ms. Powers, to approve the minutes. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five to zero. And, yes?
I just want to make sure that the information on the final budget, I know on this resolution that's here at the last page, we didn't approve the final, the five-year work plan though, right? So, I know Mr. Bradshaw kind of made mention, my assumption is that we still have to approve the five-year work plan, but maybe should that be taken out of this, this, the last page of that document?
That comes straight from the DOE like that. They send it to me. It's not a word document, so I will...
We'll have to go back and approve the five-year work plan.
Right.
But that's a document sent straight from here. So that's the document that we have to give them, so we didn't approve the five-year work plan yet.
It's an excellent point, Mr. Dodd, it truly is. It's just...
Took it out of the script.
Yeah, that's just point of the word, thank you.
With that, Dr. Hebert, did you have anything? Mr. Bishop?
No, so what is developing the agenda for the workshop on the 24th of this month? I would be getting that out to you in a few days.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Dodd, did you have something on that?
What's the timeline? Are we looking at that, Mr. Bishop? I mean, is that nine o'clock start, eight o'clock? What is that?
Six thirty in the morning, I think you said.
I'm good with all the above. You always let me know. I'll make sure we have people there. This is certainly up to the board. I would suggest definitely not start after nine, when it starts at eight. If you like, if it starts at nine, however you, whatever you'd like.
The superintendent is good with eight, but if you, how are you all? Eight or nine?
Eight in Crystal River? That'll work.
Is it, is it Crystal River? Is that where we're starting?
No. Our thought was that we were...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bishop, could you give me what you, what you and I discussed today and whether we saw what coming? Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
This is our regular day, right?
Yes.
What we have discussed preliminarily is this, that we'd, again, either eight or nine AM, whatever the, whatever the board's will is, we would go out to La Canto complex. There's multiple projects out there that we want to share with the board. From there, we'll go over to Christopher Primary and Christopher High School. From there, we'll go to Citrus Springs Elementary School, come back over to Amherst Primary School, back to Citrus High School, and out to Falls City Elementary. So we feel like we have a pretty robust agenda, because we just want you guys to get a good perspective as to all the progress we have going on out there. But that's kind of what we're thinking. My goal would be to, like to be back over to Citrus High School for these luncheon lunch dismissal, so we can have a conversation about some things we've talked about in executive session. We will look at the garden shack at Citrus High School, yes, ma'am.
So, are we traveling together then, I think?
Our thought would be that we would travel together. Certainly, we'd have this up to the board. If the board liked to travel together, I thought it'd be a great opportunity for the board to experience one of the new buses. As you know, we've gone to gasoline buses. I think they're somewhat impressive, and I can arrange through transportation to have a school bus to take us to each of these stops, if you, if you prefer. If not, we can certainly take some white fleet vans, however, whatever the will of the board is, we'll certainly do that.
If there's, if it's not going to disrupt, disturb transportation and, and impact our students in any way, I had an opportunity to ride one of those buses on a field trip recently, and I do think they, they are different. They're in a good way, and I think that there are some features on there that if the board has an opportunity to experience it, it would have benefit, but if the board's pleasure is not to do that, I think I'm agreeable as well.
I've already written one too, but I do agree. It is nice. It's impressive. It'd be something that we could talk about, but is there a way, instead of having to tie up the bus driver for the entire day, maybe we could just take it to a location and then get it?
Does it really do that?
I don't know. I don't know if that's logistically possible.
I think with the stops, the, I think if they, if, if there's a way to accommodate that, the question becomes, of course, how do we get back to our vehicles, and if there's a way to do that, that, that may, that may be an issue.
If the board would like for us to work on that, those logistics, I can, I'm confident I can take care of that.
All of us on one bus make sure that we are time certain for everything that we're supposed to see, and sometimes if we're traveling in two or three different cars or vans, you're going to have a little lag somewhere every time we stop, and you just mentioned a lot of stops, so...
It would allow us to have staff with us during that. I'm hoping that, that the invitation, that the Chronicle may be able to spend that time with us too, because I do think if that does, and with the public, of course, because it will be a workshop that's a public workshop, that will have an agenda published and, and provided to that, so it permits those opportunities.
Well, if we took a bus, I guess, would the bus be open to the public to ride to them?
I believe it, it wouldn't, I don't think we could prohibit that, unless I'm, I'm missing that from the, from the attorney, I don't think we would, we would prohibit that.
He's thinking. They're your office, correct?
I think that fits sixty.
So, we can definitely use a bus.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Definitely invite, we can call some of the bus. Get on the bus with y'all and anything else.
It's been a few years since we've done this, which is why I think it's a good, good opportunity, and I think the bus does permit for some of those, you know, contingencies and, and issues that we can more easily address those.
So, just, so clarify any questions? What's the will of the board? Do you want eight AM start time or nine AM?
Well, we're talking about meeting like here at eight AM?
Yes.
Or would we meet in here at eight AM? And then when we meet in this room? Is that what you're thinking, Mr. Kennedy?
We'd meet at the bus.
I'd meet at the big yellow bus outside, yeah, because that's, the agenda's going to say that, and, and we'll actually, you know, open up the workshop when we get on the bus. We will actually open, I'm sorry?
To the location, that's what it is. I'm sorry. I knew there was, there was a thing.
And you leave that location.
We will, we'll recess it and then we reopen it.
If you want to not discuss anything on the bus that has to do with anything. And so, the time wise, the time of that many stops, though, I mean...
And certainly, like I say, it's very, that's very preliminarily, that that's our draft agenda. If the board, you know, if it's a situation where we need to trim it down to meet the will of the board, we can trim that down. We just identify projects that we'd like to share with the board, but certainly we can, we can...
Considering we have not done this in many years, I think it's important for us to see what we need to see, so...
I was on the board when we did it.
I know you were.
How about this, if it's okay with the board, I will be working with Ms. Edel on the agenda tomorrow. We have a draft agenda right now. We will, we'll work through the logistics of trying to get a, a bus that maybe take us from here to La Canto, have, have the provisions made that from there, we potentially could take a couple of vans from that point forward to try to accelerate our travel, if you will, because you know the buses are a lot slower. And we'll have two different agendas. We'll share them with the board, and whatever the board prefer to do is what we'll, we'll definitely do. We want to accommodate you guys as much as possible.
I would just say this, if we're going to go through the lunch hour, I'd like for us to have lunch at that school.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I think would be appropriate for us to, you know, visit the school for lunch.
Well, remember, Mr. Duncan, he had us have lunch with the kids, have lunch with them and sit with them.
Will arrange that, lunch at school.
That would be great. We'll pay, each of us.
Any other questions about that? Eight AM, nine AM, is what I'm, I mean, clear?
Board members? Eight works for me.
Eight AM, we'll be, okay, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Mullins? Mr. Dodd?
Yes, tomorrow is the 9/11 program at the Valerie Theater. From nine to 12, we have that facility will be used. It has in the past years in Arleo, and that group has done a great job with a living history type program there with all of the items that was, that were involved with 9/11. Andy Tarpe's been very active with that, with our students, and I know this year we tried to get more of our high school students there. Mr. Ballack, I think, has done a great job with getting the word out to the high schools and to try to get some of our lower students there. I've heard that there's going to be a good number of students that are going to tour that program tomorrow, so I'm very happy for that. I would like to have a little talk at some point on the mobile response team that Livestream has, as they respond to how it's, how that program is being utilized, and look at some data with our Baker Acts. And so I would like us as a board to make sure that Livestream and what we do coordinates together, that Livestream, I don't want to say we're making sure that they are doing what they've told us they would do, but I would like to see how that program has worked with the mobile response team, and so I would like to bring that up as an item to the superintendent and to you, Mr. Chairman, as far as...
Are you, is it something you're asking that you, that the board consider for a workshop item?
I think it would probably be better for a workshop, yeah, I mean...
I mean, that's what I'm trying to...
Do you want that now because, or do you want to wait closer after they've had a few more months?
Yeah, I think, right.
But just keep on the radar?
Yeah, maybe not at our next workshop, because we had that planned, but maybe for the following, do we have a?
We'll probably have one in November, is what I'm assuming.
If not, we can bring you in January for...
Right, but, but we will have it in October too, right? So I just want to make sure that, you know, that Livestream knows that we're interested in how that program is working and how it's benefiting children, so...
I think that also it's a piece of those, a number of things that we're doing with regards to mental health, from the mental health behavioral specialists to, we have now a five-hour requirement that, that we're still trying to learn, mandate from the state that has to be done to our middle school and high school. All of those pieces may be part of a, you know, almost a workshop on that, that mental health component.
Well, even the one-hour response time and just the coordination and communication with the sheriff's office, because the point of a mobile response team is to be able to get to a school to assess a situation that may prevent a child from having to be Baker acted if there's certain things in place and risk factor, all those things. So I just want to make sure that we're you up with that. It's being done in the way it should. The safety committee has a meeting on Thursday, and so I didn't know if any of you had anything specific that you would like to be addressed there. I know we talked about some things in the expulsion, the expulsion hearing is specific to those cases, but some things that we'll, that I'll be bringing to the, to the committee, but I didn't know if there was any questions you had for me or anything that any of you would like. If you do, just let me know during your time. So we dodged the Hurricane Dorian. Man, I tell you, that was a blessing.
And not evasive.
But, you know, I was pleased with the way staff, Sam Hemmle and staff worked on that and came up with a plan early on, was on top of everything with the shelters and with, you know, the, the idea of what's best for students. I think decisions that were made were appropriate, and I'm glad to know that's, we didn't have any effects of that storm, but we were ready. And I know Mr. Mullin has said, and I agree completely, that should there be a need for a shelter to be opened, those, our people can respond within an hour. I can make sure that can happen, so that's good for our community to know. And then again, the county commission had their hearing on the, their budget, and we're so grateful for the continued support of the school resource officer program on their end, so I do appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't get to go to my board of directors meeting. It got canceled. I got a bunch of stuff done during that last of the week, which I was thankful to. So I don't have very much to say, except I'm glad, somebody said, somebody said that Florida beat two hurricanes in ten days. I said, yes, we did. All happened.
That was good. Ms. Powers?
Yes, just wanted to remind you that this coming Sunday, September 15, 4:00 PM, Curtis Peterson auditorium, the I.D. opening ceremony for the juniors to go get their shirts. I don't mind any of the shirt. I sort of heard a rumor that that might happen, but the dolphin is a fan.
I saw it in Mr. Bittner's office, the tubs of sweatshirts yesterday.
All right, give me that again.
It's about 4:00 PM, Curtis Peterson. This is coming Sunday, September 15.
I'm all going to be there.
Okay, and it's the I.D. opening ceremony, and children get their shirts, and maybe the dogs might.
Got to show up to find out.
That's right.
And I want to tell you, of course, with your bitten, the parents appreciate y'all so much, because every year you give a donation to the parent organization, and we always support it. Sandy, you know that your name is like a golden belt to everyone out there. They just really appreciate you. And some other stuff you're going to report on, and I'm going to follow up.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to get that.
Okay, well, I look who's trying Saks meetings. I had two of them back, back yesterday. Did a half of Saks meeting at the Campbell Middle, and then I left a little early to do the last half of one at Citrus Springs Primary, but, and then I missed Rock Crusher, but I don't know why they said there's Saks meeting for this afternoon, but I stopped there today.
And explained it to them.
And explained it to them. I excused absence. But I'm so impressed with how all these schools are using the, the data that they collected and then looking at a school improvement plan based on that data, and they've outlined those cohorts, and they looked at attendance, they looked at discipline, they've got the tier one, tier two, through tier, through kids identified. We need to help them all we can with those, those problems that they have. But I'm so impressed with the faculty and the administration that we have running our school.
No, I got it. I'm on the committee for the Act to an American Readout, and so I'm doing that tomorrow, and they're going to, they're working on their reading right now, and so y'all will be notified if you're going to read, Ginger.
How many? Like every year?
And I'm, I'm going to try and get three, three different levels of kids. I got my eye on one little girl that left Forest Ridge, and she's at Citrus Springs Middle, and I'm going to tab her for one of the readings. She was awesome in that Junie V production, and I'm going to tell you, so I'm going to find her and make sure she gets a reading, so, so they can have more kids. They have a problem with, they have a whole bunch of kids that can't have a microphone, so I'm going to try and just get one or two. That's, that's my designated job on the committee. So if you've got somebody that you want me to go add, I'm looking for about three or four max.
I, I also want to say thank you to our staff for the preparations for Dorian and Liftout, Chief Grant and Mr. Ballmer. Your name was mentioned a number of times, of not only that you were there, but how jocular and enthusiastic, not that you were looking for the storm to come, but just in a positive way of, of just helping the room in some of those. So thank you for that, because you, you often have to deal with the logistical challenges, and we appreciate you. I also had attended a number of our school advisory council meetings. I just have to say, you know, I am such a strong proponent of our school advisory councils. They are often the voice of our parents and our students, our community. When the state decades ago developed these SAC councils, it is one time that they really did the right thing to give stakeholders in our community an opportunity to have a role in the direction of their school. You know, with school choice ever growing in our state, I feel that these school advisory councils are more necessary than ever, and we need to continue to take advantage in fostering, listening, and supporting them. I'm so grateful, because we've got some school administrators that really understand how to use those school advisory councils. how to use those school advisory councils effectively, and I, I have to compliment Dr. Hebert and Ms. Trish Kayler, because I know that they model that, I know they believe it, because I've been a part of their school advisory councils. They understand that and recognize the vital role that these SACs can play in helping the school and administration be successful. Along those same lines, the educational services, under the direction of Director Trish Kayler, is offering a SAC informational leadership training on October third for the chairperson, the principal, and the school board members. And this is certainly an opportunity. A lot of us have done these and talked about them in the past, and they're, they're just a way for the expectations of the SAC and the opportunities of them to get taught. You know, they have to work under the sunshine just like us, so they often have to be, you know, trained just like we are.
October what?
That is October third.
All right. What time?
Um-
Five, five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Thank you.
And I believe it's at W T C.
Trish needs to advertise that we, that there could fall the board members to come.
Okay.
October third?
October third. Yeah, just, it's easier to just notice the meeting, right, we're done.
Right, so, yeah.
That's a great idea. I'm glad I mentioned it. See, that was, that was totally planned. Citrus legislative delegation session. This is really part of our legislative platform, and, and this is one of the things, I'm just going to wrap up with this. I appreciate Ms. Powers, Thursday is going to Orlando, Kissimmee?
Kissimmee.
Yeah, to represent the board on the legislative platforms with Florida School Board Association, and, and we so appreciate that. We, the superintendent and I are going to be, will be presenting to the legislative delegation. I sent you kind of a proposed platform conversation, and I just wanted to see if there was any feedback, any changes or thoughts that you had for that, that I sent out, and if there is, let me know. A lot of it is just versions of conversations we've been having, and/or have had, or previous platforms, trying to narrow it down. We will, of course, include, we'll, what I would do is, at a future meeting, when we have the Florida School Board Association's platform, which, that'll start getting developed on Thursday, we'll bring that forward, and then have an opportunity to adopt that, if we so desire, as a board, and then have those other conversations. But I just wanted to just see if there was any feedback you had on that. I know, did you have any feedback on mine that I'd sent first? Any thoughts?
I can think of anything that you left out, and I like the idea that we're building on the success that we've had over the last couple of years.
That was, that's-
I like the continuation.
That's what the goal, so I wanted to, and then Ms. Powers, she shared some with us, and I think she just passes, that's why I'm going to let Ms. Powers go ahead and share.
These are from the discussions that we've had recently about the platform and stuff. And the first one talks about counselors, and many of you say, many people say, that they should be fulfilling the counseling role and not other jobs taking away from that counseling role. And we know counselors do schedules all the time, and, and it means they have less and less time to work with students. And what we need is more and more time to work with students. That's why we're, we have, the state's giving us people to put in the school system, social workers, others. So I'd like us to, to focus on that.
And I will say, Steve Turner, before he retired, my first year I was elected, I went to him, and I said, if all these kids have got iPads, there's got to be something in Skyward where they can, they can do most of their own data entry. He did something in Skyward, and you even made a comment about Genevieve scheduling herself through the right end. So Steve is, Steve did something, and I think that's relieved a little bit of, you've got some counselors that are a little reluctant to give up that-
There's no legislative requirement that a counselor does schedule.
No, there is not.
There's not, I mean-
No, but I want to-
The point is that if, if we were to do that tomorrow, somebody has to take up that scheduling piece.
Oh, that's true. But remember, we're under the obligation to improve the mental health all over, and, and counselors are trained to deal with mental health, so not looking at very people who are trained to do that, it's not a good idea, I think. But I know what you're talking about, with the need to have people covering a lot of things, but I think there's a way, way to do it, like you said, the suggestion.
Yeah, and some of, some of that, and it's working, and some of the rules that are, that are doing it. So if, if we involve them, that takes up a lot of that data entry. You're not part of scheduling, counselors being part of what course you're going to take, what teacher you're going to use, what program you're going to evaluate academies. Now, they're always going to be a part of scheduling, there's just no way.
There's certain decisions that must be made with the counselor, but just the general overall, okay, first period, second period, third period, was-
I'm just saying, a counselor, there were that many sheets of paper, just plugging in data entry.
And Ms. Counsel, I just want to give credit. I think Mr. Changlin actually staffed it out to, to Ms. Andropski. She's the woman, actually, I think, implemented putting that in place for us to use. So, and just because I, I, that's what I was just going to say, I knew you'd wanted to know that, so-
Yes, thank you.
We're very excited about it.
And there was some counselors that really, they, they were a little reluctant to give up that, sit down and talk to the kid about doing it, and then doing all that paperwork, but it, it's going to, it's going to take off. So it is pretty helpful.
Ms. Powers, I'm sorry.
I mentioned that at the state level, I can't remember how many years ago, but there was a law that said by twenty-five, where the counselors and mental health people had to use seventy-five percent of their time to work the records of students, and only twenty-five percent to do these other things. And any grade, I think, at a state level, I think this would come back. But I was-
And that's fine, but then somebody has to pick up that other fifty percent of their time.
I think though-
There has to be a body that's going to do that.
I think, Ms. Powers, though, that that, that seventy-five percent included scheduling, because it was working with a student's schedule.
Well, I was a counselor then, and no, it did not. Now, it could, at some level, maybe-
Yeah, that's very-
and senior level could have included, but the lower levels did not, you know. So I think that needs to be looked at, because to say, okay, we're going to have more mental health, and then go to the very people who trained in mental health, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Number two, and this is, it's a bug, buggering with me, it's not just mental health, but mental health personnel should be paid in a separate pay scale from the structural support and perhaps administrative. That's so we can get the people in, like the psychologists. You cannot go out and say, here, I want you to be a psychologist at Citrus High School, we'll pay you thirty-five thousand dollars a year. That's not going to happen, you're not going to be able to hire someone like that. And I think a person who is skilled and gifted in, in what they do, football coach, you know, you've got to know something about football, you say and grab someone from the cafeteria and say, here, your football coach today. People who are trained should be, I feel, personally, this is a personal thing, should be paid according to abilities. They do have the training, they do have the job that they can do, and not just make it across the board, like, okay, all people who have a bachelor's degree, you pay this. No, there should be something else. So I'm going to bring that up. The third one, this one, I did some research, I was a friend of mine who were involved in doing some counseling and therapy, use, using technology, and it deals with, it says, for the most part, counseling and mental health intervention should be face-to-face, live and in person. Technical advances such as limited use of computers and iPads can be used to enhance understanding, but on a limited basis, it cannot replace the live interaction. And I know there's a push in the private sector, was pushed in, in some school situations to be able to use-
My wife's, my mom's been in rehab, and they hand them an iPad and say, here's your counselor. And, and the person's escaping, escaping with them, but yeah, it's, it's a different-
It doesn't work. And a friend of mine, he worked in, in this type situation, and his relative owned a company that did this. But speaking with him and with his friends, said, no. And he said, there's certain things that you should look at, and he, he believed, now this is one, two people, that sixteen years of age or older could be the people who might benefit from some limited technological interventions. You know, with the iPad given to you and talked about what, what issues are, but limited and older, and very much was against having the younger children, because if a, a situation came up and a six-year-old had like a, sort of a breakdown, an emotional crisis, and nobody's there to deal with the emotional crisis, what is that child going to do? It needs to be a one-on-one.
They can't, can't, they can't.
Exactly.
I try, I try.
And Thomas, yeah. Well, you look at the next one, that, and I had never thought of this at all, but it said, some of the programs, some of, some of the actual equipment used by different people, they conflict with one another when they're trying, you have the counselor trying to talk to someone who's a councilor, but they can't talk with each other because their programs or their, what they're using aren't in sync. And I'd never thought of that. And my friend is excellent in, in technology, so he was able to overcome that. He said, just the general person, the general counselor could not overcome it, it's just very difficult to be able to do it. And I'd not thought of that before. Another one that, that, using these devices, you don't know who's in the room with the councilor. It's like, you know, in testing, that you don't know sometimes who's, who's taking that test, or real, or same lane counseling, where a lot of bad can happen. And the last, the counselor or councilor may record the session without anyone knowing. We had the seven year Citrus County, it was a long time ago, it's like, I don't know, twenty years ago, some person sent a child five years by recording something without the permission of, of this person. So that could happen, I would think we'd put five years in the law, but, but that's not a good situation in which a person's recording and not telling the person they recorded. So those are the ones, and mental health and the one, but particularly number two, there's a lot of me in there, because I've just seen too many people not get what, what they should get for, for their experience and their education, what they're doing, the job they're doing. It's like the football coach, the guy, you know, he doesn't leave, he's in the day and say, bye guys, you know, play, have some fun. He has to be there all the time, he has to do their games. So a person should be paid for what they do. The last one, safety, and this is just sort of obvious, and to continue the S R O in each school, a guardian in selected schools. But the main point here is for everyone to work together, to be able to find out, to analyze what problems are occurring, why, and, and ways to solve them. And if those people work together, you have a, a real team that can help the children. And then, of course, a chief in charge of the school guardians, to be able to track programs in the, in the school system. Those are the things that, if, if you want to make a comment on something that, you know, particularly is likely to stress, I will talk about being number two, that it's really something that I'm very, you know, focused on, but-
Mr. Dodd.
So this is what you're going to break down to the meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So just so that you'll know, the last one, the school safety specialist is already required by law. And in our case, our chief is a school safety specialist, but I just thought, so that you don't confuse anyone, you know that there is a school safety specialist-
I do know that, and I put that in something that would-
Right.
Always be, I mean, that was my thought, you know, always should have that. And I know, I know it's a law, and I know we have to, but we, but we had a struggle with, you know, with our person, that we're, acceptance of, or not acceptance, it's got worked out, but still, we're not always there.
And I think one, when I look at this, the, the one thing is, is we're talking to the legislators. Some of this we're talking to ourselves on.
Exactly.
And, and there's nothing wrong with that, but we're, we're talking to legislators. So the, the question always is, what's the ask? And if I'm breaking this down, and, and you tell me if I'm seeing this, and, and board members say if I'm the same, is we're talking about funding when it comes to mental health counseling and, and the needs. We're talking about flexibility when it comes to things like salary and, and, and local control. So, I mean, if the legislature would, would provide those opportunities of funding and recognize we really need the flexibility and the local control to make those decisions, not them always being at, at the mandated level of the state. And then when I come to safety and security, in order to accomplish that, because we committed to that, we need the funding. And, and that sustainable funding is, is the challenge, I think, you know, the safe schools funding. You know, we talk about, one of the things I, I assumed you kind of wanted me to do, and, is to take advantage of that opportunity, the legislative delegation, to thank our commissioners for, because if not for them, we would be in a difficult position to, to achieve that, that issue of, of that safety and security level.
I think I wrote that down, or one handed you.
You did, you did, that's why I got that there. So, but, so, so funding, flexibility, local control, those seem to be that. Mr. Dodd, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, if that's, if I'm, that coming to-
Well, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I understand what you're taking to the local legislative delegation, what Linda's going to take to that.
Yeah, and I, I apologize. So what I shared with you is, is what I'm taking to the legislative delegation.
Yeah, what you have is what you're taking here.
Right.
And then what Linda's given us is going to be, you're going to tell, you're thinking what Thomas has gotten and, and this, or what?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I sent her a, basically a, a little more similar version of what I sent you on the, you know, on the, the other priorities of those conversations. I think I shared them with you at the last meeting, that Ms. Powers would be taking with her to the meeting on Thursday. What happens at the meeting on Thursday is that all of these ideas will get brought together, and they'll, there are already a number of proposals. They, the, the entire committee will then decide what the Florida School Board Association will then consider as their platform. So if, for example, if Ms. Powers says, listen, I think we need to, you know, ask the legislators to provide counselors, da, 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 da. It, it is, it will be maybe a conversation they have, but it won't necessarily mean that they'll be able to adopt that as part of their, their platform.
They're going to adopt what will work, what will pass, what they're going to do, the things most likely to be supported by the school. So we'll discuss all these issues, but what comes in the bottom line is, is what is most likely to be asked.
And, and I'll tell you, like, for example, on that, that same line, this is where the wording on safety and security that the legis, I mean, that the Florida School Board Association is looking at. Provide sufficient and flexible, flexible funds in safety, security allocation to hire, retain the type of safe school officers that meet the needs of each school and the desires of each community. That's what the Florida School Board Association is. That kind of falls into what we're talking about at the, that Ms. Powers is talking about at the, the bottom of hers. Mr. Dodd, if that's where you're trying to tie that two together.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the things that's still with the others commission recommended is that local school boards have the opportunity to assess a half mill for school safety and security, and maybe, I mean, you could tie that in mental health, I don't know, but, you know, obviously-
You can tie in mental health.
That's, that's not going to be something that the legislature is going to pass.
Well, and that's been, you know, it's funny, because that's been a proposal, I think it's actually made it on to a last minute to, at the Florida School Board Association of, of that. Dr. Kim has continuously said, you can put it on there, but you probably aren't just going to have it ignored, as opposed to staying things like providing local flexibility of levying, you know, I mean, as opposed to a specific dollar amount. It's, I think it's going to, it's going to probably get heavily debated on Thursday.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. So in reference to yours, Mr. Kennedy, I know you mentioned the eleven behavior specialists in our elementary schools, and obviously, it would be good, I know you didn't specifically come out and say to fund that second year or have that allocation.
I figured Ms. Hemel maybe, maybe-
That is, I mean, I've heard great response from those.
I figured I'd tee it up.
Yeah.
And, and Ms. Hemel would, would close the deal.
If there was a way we could continue that program with maybe giving them some data or something, to say, hey, this is a model pilot program, please continue to fund it, you know?
That's my plan the day I go, because Thomas and I'll go together and represent what he's going to do. And then I'm going to ask, ask, give us some key bullets, and we're going to ask for them to do that.
Good.
But is that, are we on the right mark there? Because that's, because we want to be, you know, be communicating what the, the will of the board is.
What's the ask? I mean, that is the ask, because it's, I mean-
Yeah, we're going to ask.
The ask, yeah. I think we need to first thank them for doing it, so that we, you know, don't miss that opportunity, because it was huge. And I think of very versions of that were in previous budgets, but it got, it, the governor vetoed.
It was in the year before the May act.
So this, it was huge, that it, it not only got passed, but then didn't get vetoed.
Right. And also, just the fact that our county commission, like you say in here, is a partner with us, right, you know, partner in keeping our schools-
That was really you, Mr. Dodd, I wonder, that was, you're trying to put that, that in there.
You know, because the county commissions aren't going to be there, it's just going to be the-
They're usually in the room, though, at the same time, so I, I felt it was in- They're usually in the room though, at the same time, so I, I felt it was important for them to all hear.
Yes, it definitely is. And, and with them hearing that, saying that this is what our community is doing in Citrus County. I mean, that's the seriousness that not just school, but the county commission sees for keeping our community safe and they're so grateful. And so.
And you brought up, that's not happening everywhere.
No, it's not.
But we just, we just did budget and we could not be doing what we're doing if we didn't have the commissioners giving us the money. We just don't have it.
But I, I think Thomas, you did a great job on this document that you sent to us, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that we'll be able to say all of it, but, but those key points will stay and then we'll provide them with the backup on it. Ms. Powers?
I think, didn't they put a time on us, Sandy, when we were there last?
Yeah, it's three minutes, I think. Ms. Hamel will, she's got a good cane to bring me.
Kennedy, can you please address the behavior?
Yes, please.
Student services posters, just so you know, we've been working with the Department of Education as the allocation's being released. And we are going to be collecting data on Baker Acts, threat assessments and all of those pieces. We've communicated with them. Look at a discipline data, O S S, I S S data. So we will have that information as we work through the year. The, the one I will tell you, concern that we have regarding threat assessments is it will look higher this year than it has in the past because of the new tool that we've used. But we have informed the Department of Education that we know there's going to be an increase because we don't want it to look like, well, you have more threat assessments and you have these behavior student services toses, so why do you need them? Because it caused more threats. And we're going to have to explain that, you know, it's a change in the tool and the expectation of what we're sharing. So I just wanted you to know, we already have that in place and in motion to collect that data.
Thank you.
And the safety issue. Yes, more information to have the safety.
Okay, the only other thing I just want to say, again, I want to thank you all. Board docs is not an easy undertaking and it's, it is truly, it's going well. We learned more again today and I'm sure that by the next meeting, not the very next, the one after that, we'll make more progress. And, and try and, you know, just get it to be lighter and, and less of anything, you know, that's cumbersome. So we're making progress. So I'm just grateful to you all because it's, it is work on, on our part. Staff, I know behind the scenes, I'm hearing good things. And I, I, I know workloads will continue to get better as we all get, you know, more familiar with it. Ms. Hamel? I'm done.
I'm headed tonight to Tampa because this is our fags week that we need to follow the superintendent. So if you know me, Nene, you know where to find me. I'll just say, I've been walking around several of our schools. I've talked to probably most of the principals. Schools had a great opening. I'll pick on Ms. Smith today. I'll tell you what's fun is when we walk through the classrooms and just to watch Vicki teach and several other teachers. But the way they're engaged, where they've got the kids engaged, the resources they're using, it's not to stand up there and kids sit and get. It's just exciting to walk through our classrooms and see what they're doing. A lot of great teachers out there, a lot of great staff. You all know that Katie Hughes was nominated at the I M S and she's the social studies teacher for the state. They're going to recognize her at conference. So a lot of great things going on in the school system. At Citrus High, I watched the guardians walk around. They don't sit anywhere. I M S, I, the only complaint he had, he told me, was that he walks nine miles a day and has not lost one pound in a month. But the kids at Citrus, it's just fun to watch them walk by and fist bump them and talk to them and talk to them about their games and those kind of things. And of course, they call their guardian, their guardian angel. Because it's Angel Randy. So it's been a good thing and I'm just proud to say that you all asked to do that. We have completed that task and I believe that we're going in the right direction and our kids are safe and staff is safe. So a lot of good things out there, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. Anything else, board members? With that, we're adjourned.